Here.
Councilman Benson.
Ms. Benson.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Councilman McElDowney.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that we're all here this evening. I'd like to invite everybody to rise, join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone. I'd ask the staff to go around with the microphone, allow the audience to introduce themselves, please.
Mac McFarland.
Ellen Haug.
Phil Perez.
Lori Ranshaw.
Ian Ranshaw, FOP Lodge 19.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Michelle Rogers, City Manager's Office.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Yasmin Cassini, Parks and Recreation.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks and Recreation.
Lisa Nordhold, Parks and Recreation.
Patrick Buckley, Community Development.
Cindy Hagerbin, Neighborhood Services.
Greg Clemens, Public Works.
David Lutter, Neighborhood Services.
David Pox.
Tracy Jones, Housing Authority.
Lynette Moway.
Roger Tinklinberg, Finance.
Chuck Sonnier, PD.
Jim Hayes, Community Development, Mike Development.
Michelle Halsted, Communications.
Thank you all for being here this evening. We'll start it with our agenda items. First, I would like to take care of the presentation and proclamations, and in that we have the present, the Project Present participants, and I'll have the Acting City Manager go ahead and introduce all those folks, and I will come down to give them their appreciation certificate.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. City employees and community organizations honored the season of giving this year by sponsoring nearly 300 Commerce City children through Project Present. Created by the Commerce City Parks and Recreation Department, this program benefits underprivileged children by providing them with gifts. Each year, local elementary schools nominate 20 children in need, and these children provide a wish list of items ranging from clothes to toys. The program requires a minimum of $30 to be spent per child, but many organizations give well over that amount, purchasing coats, gloves, bikes, and even skateboards. With gifts piling up this year, local company Exodus Moving and Storage donated space to hold all of the presents. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to invite the following individuals representing the following organizations to come forward and be recognized. Exodus Moving and Storage, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 19, The Colorado Rapids, Smile for Life Dental, Kaiser Permanente, Church Next Door, Reunion Dental Care, Douglas Colony Group, One Global Renewables, Commerce City Victim Advocates, the Commerce City Police Department, Commerce City Building and Safety Division, the Commerce City City Manager's Office, and the Commerce City Parks and Recreation Department. Well, let's start by giving everybody a big round of thanks. And also, I noticed Yasmin came forward. I'd also like to give special recognition to Yasmin Cassini, who is the city's Youth Services Coordinator for her hard work in organizing this year's program. So, thank you, Yasmin.
Yep, I did that. All set. I'm all set. Do you want me to do one more?
I would like to say thank you to all of our recipients on this program, and a lot of them were staff and a lot of staff effort. I noticed the tree out there before they hauled everything away, and there just was piles of stuff. So, it really helps our community when we have businesses and our staff involved with these kind of venues. So, thank you very much. Mr. Moreno.
Just a brief comment. I had the privilege of participating in this program this year on behalf of the Commerce City Victim Advocates along with Councilman McElDowney, and it was just a great experience to go out and shop for the kids that received these gifts, and I was struck by the humble nature of the gifts. They didn't want a lot, maybe a hot wheel, maybe some clothes for school, and it was just great that we're continuing this program for the families in need in Commerce City.
Absolutely. The next item on our agenda happens to be citizen communication, and this is probably the first time, and after eight years of being on council prior, first time this has ever happened, and the council needs to remember this, but there's absolutely nobody that has signed up for citizen communication. Not that there isn't questions from our citizens that need to be answered, however, it does help with our timing for our meeting. So, we will move forward on the agenda and skip the council communication piece of it. Next is Community Development Department Overview. I would like to ask the staff to come forward and present to council an overview of the Community Development Department, and it's going to be Acting Direct, no, you're the Director, you're Acting Economic Development Director, Mr. Jim Hayes doing the presentation.
Actually, Mayor Ford, if I might, what I wanted to do is give just a brief introduction to serve as an overview of how staff has structured these presentations over the next three city council meetings before council's retreat at the end of February. There are three city council meetings, including tonight, between now and February 24th, when city council's retreat starts. So, what we've looked, in looking at those agendas, we tried to structure them in such a way to give you what we think might be useful information to help with that effort. And it is just three meetings. It's tonight, February 6th, February 13th, and then there's no meeting February 20th. So, with those three meetings, it's not a lot of time. We wanted to try and use them strategically, again, to provide information that, in our opinion, you might find useful, but if there is additional information, other presentations you might like between now and then, please let us know. We'd be happy to work those into the schedule. Again, our goal was to provide information that we thought would be helpful. It focuses primarily on the city's budget and an overview of our ongoing efforts to develop an updated, long-range financial plan for the city. We're also going to talk next week about prior goals that have been given to us by council and provide an update to you on staff's work on those, and we thought it would save time by presenting the information to you during these council meetings so as not to take up valuable time during the retreat with staff making presentations to council. It's sort of the formula that we've used in advance of the city council's budget retreat. We've used the month or so prior to the budget retreat to load council up with key information, and it seems to have helped the budget retreat process go more smoothly. So, tonight, we're going to begin by giving you an overview of the Community Development Department. Also, on a related note, the Community Development Department provides staff support to some boards and commissions. We previously scheduled those folks to be here tonight so you can meet them. And then Roger Tinklinberg's going to present what we are calling kind of Part One of the Budget Long-Range Financial Plan Overview. It's a meaty topic. There's a lot of information there, so we're going to present the first part of that tonight, and that, we think, will take up most of the time available, especially if council has some questions. And then February 6th, as I mentioned, we're going to provide an update of prior priorities and goals that have been provided to us by council. In the middle of the year last year, the city did an update to its Comprehensive Community Opinion Survey, so there's some valuable data there that I think will be useful to you, opinions that we got back from citizens in Commerce City. And then Mr. Hayes will be back providing an overview of our economic development efforts. And then the last meeting before February 24th will be the council meeting on the 13th. Roger Tinklinberg will be back providing Part Two of that Long-Range Financial Plan Overview. We're going to talk to you about a stormwater utility program that was discussed last year. Michelle Halsted will be providing an overview of our communications efforts. Acting Chief Sonnier will be here to talk about the police department. And then, not related to council's retreat, but another topic that's been important to council will be a discussion on the 13th about shifting the council meeting format back to a more traditional study session format for the second and fourth meetings of the month. So, that's kind of a quick look ahead over the next three meetings. Again, if there are topics that are of interest to you that you believe would be helpful prior to the retreat, let me know. We'd be happy to work that into the schedule over the next three meetings. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, Jim Hayes, Director of Community Development. I'm going to run through a couple dozen slides here. We have some guests that are going to speak from our boards and commissions to give you an overview of what their functions are, and then we can try to get through that and then wrap it up with some questions from each of you. Just really quick, there's the city organization chart, and again, the citizens of Commerce City are at the top of that chart, followed by the elected officials, and I just wanted to point out that Community Development is over on the left side under the Deputy City Manager for External Services, and so that's where we reside in the organization. We are divided up into four divisions: Planning, Building Safety, Neighborhood Services, and Housing, and I just want to recognize the people that are here from each of those divisions here tonight. Planning is headed by Chris Kramer, our Planning Manager. Building Safety is headed by our Chief Building Official, Patrick Buckley. Neighborhood Services is headed by our Neighborhood Services Manager, David Lutter. And then Tracy Jones is our Housing Coordinator, which provides staff support to the Housing Authority. We have a budget of a little over $3 million. There's 36 employees in those four divisions, and we had nine of the council goals from 2011, and I'm going to explain how our work plan from last year has tied into that directive that we received. So, first of all, planning is divided up into two main functions, although there's a lot of crossover between the staff that work in these two main areas. Strategic planning are what a lot of communities would call long-range planning. This involves the comprehensive plan, special projects and studies such as the Blight Study for the Dog Tracker, some of the things that they're working on. Current planning, also known as development review planning. They do all the plan review, development case management, a couple of staff service planner of the day running the front counter at the building division there. Some of the projects that we've been working on, Goals 44 and 45 regarding area planning and neighborhood planning. We're looking at doing a RTD Fast Tracks Station Area Plan near 72nd Avenue. We hope to expand this to include more of the neighborhood to the east and possibly including the area around the former high school. We did receive a grant from Dr. Cog for $100,000 with a $25,000 match, and so we're going to be kicking that project off in this spring, probably. We just received the funding approval. Goal number 49, this is probably an annual goal that we have, is updates to the Land Development Code, and these include not only housekeeping items that we look at every year, but also more substantive things like, for example, the SIGN code that we're going to be looking at in 2012. Annexation criteria was another goal that was set for the department, and we do have a study session that we've requested for this spring in the first quarter to talk to you about that, to get some discussion going about developing an annexation policy. This was also one of the goals that came out of the comprehensive plan, so we think we're right on track with the timing of this. The last one was funding for redevelopment, and in that goal, we talked about brownfields grants and other types of grants, and so we believe the Mile High Greyhound Park redevelopment plays perfectly into that. We have applied for and will be receiving an Economic Development Administration Grant from the Department of Commerce to do some feasibility studies, and we're always looking at other grant opportunities for that property as we continue our planning efforts. The building division, again, focused on a couple of different areas: permitting and inspections. They do enforce the adopted building codes, they issue permits, collect fees, perform plan reviews and inspections, and there were two major projects that were tied in with the city council goals last year. The first one is the adoption of the 2009 International Building Codes. We did have a study session at the end of last year. We'll be bringing that back to you in March for first reading of the ordinance, so we think we're right on track with that goal. Also, the other goal is online permitting, and unfortunately, we found that that did not make it into the 2012 budget, so we're trying to make it do with some software upgrades that we can handle through our existing system, do some trade licensing, try to make it as easy as possible for people to get permits online with our existing system. Neighborhood Services, again, the third division we have is focusing on inspections and compliance, addressing nuisances out of the municipal code such as junk, trash, weeds, junked motor vehicles. We enforce all the applicable codes and ordinances, including some elements of the Land Development Code, and I do want to point out that we seek voluntary compliance. We're not out there police officers. We don't take the focus of revenue generation as our mission. It's really about obtaining compliance. And I had David pull up some stats for me this morning. We had over 6,000 notices of violation that we issued in 2011, and only 5% of those actually went to a situation where we had to issue a fine on somebody. So, only about 1 in 20 actually gets to that point. Some of their projects, we had one goal specifically from the council, and that was the Adopted District Cleanup Program. We have designated Derby as that area because we put a lot of time and effort into that so far. We hope to have some new information for you on that later this spring. Other special products that we've identified since I arrived here is snow and ice volunteers. One of the things we're looking at doing is trying to develop a list of volunteers that can help our elderly and disabled residents so that when we go out and provide them a notice for a snow and ice violation, we also come up with a solution for them. We really want to be cautious, though, and develop that list of volunteers first before we unveil the program because we know there's going to be a lot of demand for that. Second thing was weed ordinance revisions. We had been operating with some, an interim policy last year, specifically in the northern range with some of the undeveloped sites that were either within subdivisions or large parcels of land owned by developers, and so we're working with the Planning Division and the City Attorney's Office to come up with some new code updates so that we can make sure we're ready when things start growing again in the spring. Finally, we're updating our approach to proactive inspections. I want to take a more targeted approach to geography and take a look at how we're addressing the proactive approach to our inspections. Only one out of 10 of the calls that we get or that we go out on are from a complaint, so the other 90% are really based on us going out there and enforcing the codes. And we want to make sure that we're letting the residents know what types of things we're looking for, when we're coming, and really improve those communication efforts and customer services we go out into the community, especially, again, in the spring. Lastly is housing. Again, we provide staff support to the Housing Authority. This is an independent board, very similar to the Urban Renewal Authority in terms of its structure, and we have a cooperative agreement between the city and the Housing Authority where we provide staff support. It does provide housing opportunities and resources, helping residents buy, rent, and improve homes. The main goal we had from last year was the Housing Authority's strategic plan, and I'm happy to say that that goal was achieved. Our Planning Division staff essentially operated as consultants in that regard and really assisted the staff from the Housing Authority in putting together that plan. We'll be looking at possibly doing a Phase Two in 2012, looking at how we implement some of the components of that plan. Other products that Tracy works on is the Section 8 Loan Program and state compliance. The Housing Authority also repurchased the northern parcel of the Contra Estates Development where the single-family homes are, so we'll be looking at how we can get that development completed next year. And then lastly, one thing I'm looking at with Mr. Cordero in the government relations is community development block grants and how we can possibly use some of that for a home repair program and get some grants out to some people that need some assistance in the community. So, now I'm going to transition to the boards and commissions, and we'll have some guest speakers come up and just run through a couple of slides that explain who they are and what their functions are. So, we'll run through the Planning Commission with Mr. McFarland, also the Board of Adjustment with David Pox, our Vice Chair, the Derby Review Board with Jessica Osborne, who's the Vice Chair. I'll make a brief comment on the Board of Building Appeals because that's not a board that is actually, has any members right now. And then lastly, the Commerce City Housing Authority. I believe Mr. Bruce Thomas is going to go ahead and run through that for you.
Jim, as you introduce those folks, I want to remind all of them as they come forward, just so we have it for the record, state your name and address, please, so that we can keep track of who was here and who spoke. Thank you.
My name is Mac McFarland. I'm at 4210 East 70th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, and I am the current Chair of the Planning Commission. We exercise powers granted by the city charter. We're the principal agency tasked with review and in-depth analysis for development activity and land use plans for Commerce City. We are the reviewing body who makes recommendations to city council for final decision-making. And our makeup, at this present time, we have five members, three of which are regular members, two of which are alternates. For charter, we are allowed five members and three alternate members, and we have three votes needed for favorable recommendation. The city council members used to serve on council, on the Planning Commission until the election in November, and that was one of the ballot initiatives that had the most turnout, I guess, of any I've seen in recent years, when the initiative took council members off of the Planning Commission. Our development activity cases cover zoning cases, conditional use permits, public hearing subdivisions, vacation right-of-way, and land development code amendments. The LDC is something that, in the last five years, is when we finally upgraded from the old conglomerated several books into a single, workable, living, breathing document that we're now working under. The planning documents, be the comp plan, the subarea plans, or subarea plan would be like the Derby Subarea. The Dog Track would be under another one of that nature, and then, of course, the comp plan is the update that we did here two years ago almost with a lot of citizen input, and two of the alternate members of the Planning Commission were on that board or on that committee that helped bring that together. So, now we have an updated comp plan, an updated transportation part of that. We have five people that are very dedicated on the panel right now. We have a very even split amongst North and South being represented on the commission, and if we get our open spaces filled in here in the next month or so or two, hopefully we can be able to keep that balance. One of the things that we've also done in the past couple of years is we've initiated a border-to-border tour every year so that we, as members of the commission and/or council members, can get together and go out and see what we've done, way up north, way down south, east, west, literally from border to border, and we're able to visit things that we don't normally probably get to see in our day-to-day lives, but it also gives us an opportunity to see things that may or may not work or that haven't worked out as we planned them to do. So, hopefully, you'll be seeing an invitation here in the next couple of months or late December, probably early fall, to attend our next tour. And with that, if there's any questions.
I don't see any right now, Mac, however, I think it's important to invite all of the new council members that have never participated in some of these boards to at least go to some of these board meetings and sit in the audience and watch how they function because each board is unique in to itself, and I think it can really help the council as to the citizen participation that we have from our boards. So, I want to invite all of the council members to try to make it to some of the boards, the ones that you're not on, like the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, and some of those, so you can go see exactly how they operate and who the members are and who's bringing these recommendations forward, and that we do have good folks that serve on those boards. So, thanks, Mac, for coming in.
Thank you.
I do have a couple more here now that would like to speak. Mr. Moreno.
Thanks, Mac, for your presentation. Not any questions, just comments, really. Having been on two of the Planning Commission tours, they're really invaluable. You really don't, I guess, understand or get a complete view of how expansive Commerce City will one day be until you take one of those tours, and it's always really great to get out there, so definitely encourage new folks to try to get on that. And then, just on Planning Commission's makeup, we finally got it done, and I think it was something like 87% of the vote of people saying, yeah, it's time to turn over Planning Commission to our citizens, so thanks for your continued advocacy on that as well.
Mr. McElDowney.
Excuse me, I'll echo Mr. Moreno's comments and just thank you and the members of the board for your dedication to that critical topic. There's a lot of time and energy that goes into your collective study of the subject of planning, and I know that all of you take it very seriously. My hat's off to you for running such tight meetings. You run a great meeting, and I think it's a good example for anyone who wants to see how to do it. So, again, my thanks to you and the rest of the board for your service on the Planning Commission.
Councilwoman Carson.
Hi, Mac. I won't keep you long. I just wanted to thank you and all the other members for the dedication that you have shown to the city and to echo that that tour is just, there's so much information there that it's unbelievable. It was one of the best tours I've ever been on, and I did put a request in last year for when I attend the tour this year, so I won't speak of that now, but rack your brain and make sure that we can have that provided. But thank you. I was going to say Dominic remembers what the request was, but no, thank you to all of you. It is, the city is what it is because of volunteers such as all of yourselves.
Councilman Douglas. Councilman Douglas?
Thank you, Mac, for the presentation. I was on a citizens comprehensive plan, and we were there for almost two years on that, dealing with that issue, our situation. And I did take the tour. It's a lot different sitting in the seats than driving because you get to see a lot and the whole makeup for city from industrial with the mix there, all the way up to the northeast side. So I look forward on another tour. Thanks.
Councilman Teeter?
Thank you, Mac. Well, you said you can wait till the fall before you're going to do that tour. It sounds like maybe we ought to move it up and let us new people get into it a little earlier.
Mac, that's all I see. Thanks again to you and the Planning Commission members.
It's truly an honor and a privilege for all of us to serve on the Planning Commission and serve the citizens of Commerce City. So we look forward to working with council and the rest of the boards and commissions as we need to do. Thank you.
Appreciate that. We appreciate you.
David Pox, 9550 East 112th Place. You got the relief pitcher today. I was called in at the last minute because our esteemed Chair, Laura Espinoza, was sick today. So you get the Vice Chair. If you come visit our meetings and I'm Chair, better not be late because you want a tight meeting. I set a record last time for 15 minutes, so don't be late. Our Board of Adjustment exercises powers granted by the city charter in order to facilitate responsible development when unique circumstances arise in the community. And I'll get to that in a second. Next slide. We have five members, all residents of Commerce City. One member is a councilperson by charter, and that is Renee. We have three alternates that do a fantastic job, and they often show up. So when you see a letter pass across your desk from our board that says alternates should be paid, at least half-paid, we would love to see that because they're always prepared and ready. And I doubt you'll see other boards that have all the alternates there that show up and are ready to serve. Another thing that's unique, we need four votes for approval out of the five, and we are a final say board. So what we say goes. You can't overrule us. You can't do anything like that. So we are probably the most powerful board there is, okay? And we are the best board out there, and we really enjoy our time on the board. And we disagree with each other, and that's okay. We talk it through, and sometimes we don't have unanimous votes, and that's fine. And, you know, I'll get to one of the cases later. So the three different types of cases we have, height exceptions. So this usually is sun core. That's the bulk of the height exceptions. They usually have mandates of certain heights on their smokestacks, and that's the exceptions that we have there. So I always say, if I was living in New Jersey or back in Illinois, I'd be a very wealthy man. That sun core would probably be lining my pockets there. But we do things by the board. What's that?
Not here.
Yeah, not here. The second type of case is used by permit. So that is, a typical example would be like if you wanted a daycare center within a residential area. So it's not in the comprehensive plan that it's allowed to be in there, but you make special cases. And another example would be like a halfway house in an area. And that was one of our longest cases ever, and they have been a great resident. And it's one vote that I was against, and I probably should have been for, but they've been a great resident. And the last type of case is variances. So a good example of this, if you know where the North Forest Office space is on 104th, and it's set pretty far back from the road, well, by code, they're supposed to be set up a lot further forward. But because of the type of, the topography of the land, if you were to drive by and the setback was where it was supposed to be, all you'd see is the roof. So it's really not fair. It's not self-imposed. So they really need a variance in the code so that they can set back, people can see their offices as they drive by. We're a quasi-judicial board, so we hear evidence before rendering a decision. And again, four votes are needed to pass anything. Questions, comments, concerns?
I'm going to start with Councilman Teeter. That's all right. Then we'll move right to Councilwoman Carson.
Well, David, thank you for that great presentation. It was very lively. I have, because Mr. Bullock sings the praises of the Board of Adjustment. So I do know that you guys work hard, you do good work.
And we're the best, right?
Well, I'm not going to say you're the best because they're all the best, but I want to thank you and all those that serve on that board with you. And then I wanted to tell you that I still tell everybody here, Mr. Pox needs a trail so his children can, or a crossover so the kids can ride to school. I do not forget.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
I want to thank you, David, for coming forward and making the presentation. Others on council can't say this, but I can say we're the best because I serve on it. And that's not the only reason we're the best, but that's one of the main reasons. But it's, I am glad you brought forth the note. I mentioned it to the council tonight about the pay, and it's one of the things that council is considering, and it looks like it's a goal. Thank you.
Mr. McElhany?
David, just thanks for your energy and your continued participation in the community. I really appreciate your continued presence.
David, I too want to thank you and the board, as all of our boards. I think the Planning, the Board of Adjustment is the only board out of all the years that I've participated with the city that I haven't served on. I've been on Housing, I've been on Planning Commission, I've been on, I think, all of them. Liquor Authority I haven't been on, so there's two. But we do recognize the importance, and you are a determining board. Therefore, it's important that we have people that can understand the laws, the quasi-judicial piece of not prejudging a case, and bring forward our variances and stuff that are going to stick with the city for long-term that this council doesn't have control over. And that's why we entrust it to you and your board. So thank you so much.
Great. And we'd like to go on that tour, too, so.
Good. Mac's going to hook you up.
Mac will have to invite our board.
That would be fine with us, sir.
Perfect.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks again.
I am Jessica Osborne, 140 Coral Way, Broomfield, 80020, and the Vice Chair of the Derby Review Board. And actually, I did want to just take a moment. Our Chair actually passed away in this past year, so I wanted to take a moment and just honor Gary Typlis for his service on the board. He was quite remarkable, and we're sorry he's gone. We were really established in 2007 along with the Derby Design Guidelines, the Derby PUD. There were a number of things happening at the time while I was still employed here as a planner and was a project manager for Derby. And it is a pleasure to sit on the board and to serve on the board. We're actually a little bit different than the other boards that we have here in Commerce City because we were really set up to be a design review committee as well as looking at the standards for the Derby Design Guidelines as well as the PUD. And really, this board, which looks at different architectural and urban design elements of Derby, is very similar to other types of architectural review boards or urban design review boards around the metropolitan area. LODO in lower downtown Denver has a design board similar to this, Arvada. I believe we have one in Englewood. So this is actually structured to be very similar to those types of boards, which is a little unusual. But we think that, given the unique setup of Derby and all the great things that are happening there, we wanted to be very responsive to not only what the business owners needed but what the city needed to continue to make Derby as great as it once was. We do a number of different things. We review the redevelopment applications that come through that are primarily coming from property owners. We have business owners. We do have a few homeowners in Derby. It's a very unique, eclectic little district. We do review the applications and make assessments based on what those applications are asking for. We do try to uphold the Derby's Design Guidelines, but there's a fair amount of flexibility within those guidelines that we really strive to be receptive and responsive to the business owners or the property owners and work with them based on what their ideas are and what they would like to do to make their properties more vibrant or to bring them up to code. We do have the ability to deny proposals. We rely heavily on the work that the Planning Department has already, they put in a lot of work in the very beginning into reviewing those applications that we then review after that. But if there are any appeals to the board, it is heard by City Council. I'm not sure if we've actually had any appeals come to you, but we've had a number of different cases come through, and I feel like we've had a really successful relationship, not only with the business owners but the property owners in Derby. We meet every, the third Tuesday of every month. We haven't been meeting fairly regularly in 2010. I think there were a number of different reasons why, but we did review our first case in this past month, and we're excited to get back together and to bring the group back together. We do have five members, and we have two alternates. We have great representation from the city. We also have, again, these two positions that are supposed to be filled by either an urban designer or an architect or a planner coming from outside the city. And the intent for that was to really bring an objective perspective to a proposed project or signage changes, that type of thing, that we could be able to review the design guidelines from an objective perspective. We do have a vacancy on the board. Again, due to Mr. Typlis's untimely death, we will be looking to fill that position. I believe applications were due by the end of January, if I'm not mistaken. So you may be seeing some applications on your desk soon, and we look forward to seeing who's going to be joining our team. We have a great team. At this point, since 2008, when we really started and the group got together, we've reviewed 28 cases. There have been a number of different things that we've looked at, ranging from signage to property changes, renovations. We're excited to see every one of them. I feel like we've had a really good relationship with, again, with our applicants. And again, the Planning Division and the Development Review Teams have really vetted those applications before they even come to the Derby Review Board. We're very pleased with the relationship that we have with the city as well. And then when the design, sorry, when the standards are met, they then come to the Derby Review Board, and we can either, sorry, approve or deny, or we can also look and consider whether or not they are qualifying for commercial catalyst dollars, which is really the other function of the Derby Review Board. And back, gosh, several years ago, the city approved this incentive program, and the idea was that we would actually be able to match a property owner's request to either update signage, add landscaping, do any kind of facade improvements to their property, and that this was an opportunity for us to meet them halfway with up to 50% matching funds based on what they were trying to do. And this was, again, an opportunity that we hoped business owners would take advantage of to renovate their properties. And actually, we've seen several businesses and properties in the area take advantage of this, and it's been really exciting to see new signage, new renovations. I really feel like that was a little bit of a kick that, including the library, that we've seen people take advantage of, which is great. And at this point, the properties are eligible to up to $45,000 in matching funds, depending on the frontage of their lots. There's a little bit of money left over in that pot. And again, I do want to thank the City Council for allowing us to utilize those dollars and for giving us that funding. I think that took a great leap of faith, and we're excited that we've had properties take advantage of it. And I would be thrilled to continue to see funding devoted to this in the future, once we've spent all the money that we have in that pot, because no doubt we will. Again, I just wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to be involved with the Derby Review Board. I know I'm not a property owner in Commerce City, but I have a lot of history here. It's been really a privilege to sit on the board and to work with the different staff members and the representatives that have been helping out with this project. And again, I do want to just say that we have been delighted to see all the amazing things happen in Derby over the past few years. It took an enormous amount of partnerships and resources, a lot of trust, a lot of trust from the community, and also a lot of trust from the council and all the different departments to really make this work and from the community. So we're just thrilled to see it continue. I think we're going to continue to see amazing changes in Derby. So thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Bullock?
I want to thank you, Jessica, for your presentation, and thank you for your diligence on the board. Knowing that you started with the city and you continue to stay on with the city, I can just only say thank you to you.
Thank you.
Again, thanks, Jessica. It's really nice to see you again. Haven't seen you for a while. I'm glad you're still participating in Commerce City, and I think that the Derby Review Board is great. I'm glad that we have the incentive pieces there for that urban renewal piece, and they are needed. We can just get some more interest in the Derby area. We'll keep you guys operating. And thanks to your board for participating. I want to let you also know that this council has been conducting interviews for all of our boards and commissions for the last three, four meetings, and we're getting to the point where we're going to start seating the members to make those boards whole. So for all of you in the audience, that is coming to a close, and you should have your members pretty soon.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Yeah.
Mr. McElhany?
Jessica, it's great to see you. Again, thank you for your continued energy in the Derby area. I vividly remember being introduced to your efforts to open up the Derby Community Center so long ago. It seems like so long ago.
It was a long time ago.
And it's been awesome to watch the evolution of that area and your continued impact. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Hi, Jessica. Nice to meet you. I just want to say thank you for your hard work. I have a good friend of mine that sits on that board, and she has nothing but positive things to say. I hold Derby very dear to my heart because that's my childhood home, and so I'm excited to see what the future brings for that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, thanks again.
Thank you very much. Welcome back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Brief interlude about the Board of Appeals, and then I'll turn over to Mr. Thomas for the Housing Authority. There's a Board of Building Appeals that we have here in Commerce City also, and the Building Division provides staff support. But many, many years ago, this was determined to be an ad hoc committee, so there are no current members on that. It's essentially if there's an appeal of a decision of the chief building official. And when we were talking with several staff today, we couldn't actually find someone who remembered the last time this group met. So we don't think it's really critical to go over it in any more detail. Just know that if there is an appeal, we would come before you and ask you to either appoint members or serve as that board and take action. With that, I'm going to turn over to Bruce Thomas to run through the housing authority.
Well, we'd like to thank you and the Board of Appeals. Actually, Jim, you know, Al Klein, a very dear friend of mine, served on that board for many years, and we'll be able to handle whatever is necessary that comes forward.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am Bruce Thomas, Vice Chairman at Commerce City Housing Authority. My address is 14846 Vine Street, Thornton, Colorado, 80602. I was a resident of Commerce City when I first joined the board, and I'm still on the board because my company actually works here in Commerce City. Our essential mission is to create and sustain housing for Commerce City low-income residents. There's a really strong need for this in our community here, and we hope to do some more wonderful work and help as many people as we can. I'd like to thank Jim Benson, J.D. Carson, Ken Ford, Renee Bullock, Dominic Carino, and our newest guy, Steve Douglas. We've had a lot of council members on our board over the years, and I really appreciate everybody jumping in there and helping us out a little bit. All right. So we got five members, two alternates, three votes needed for approval. However, that really doesn't happen too much. And like the other wonderful boards here in Commerce City, I feel ours are pretty good. We have a really strong group of people that are there at all the meetings. They do some continued education. They try to learn new things. We work with other cities. We work with Adams County, all trying to learn and implement anything we can. Our strategic plan's been adopted, which is a great tool for us to shoot us in whatever directions we can find are the most need here in the city, so we're excited about We just got the Contra Estates and the Senior Development Center, so we're really excited about seeing what we can put together and help as many people as we can in that area. And we also look forward to working with the city on the Dog Track property. Maybe we can get some affordable housing in that area and see what we can come up with. So that's pretty much it for me. Keep it short here. If you guys got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Councilwoman Carson?
Bruce, I just want to thank you and all the other members of Housing Authority. As somebody who did sit on that, I know it is highly committed people that are sitting there with the best interests of the citizens of the city. And then I wanted to congratulate you all on your strategic plan.
Yeah.
So good job there. So, good job there, and thanks to everyone. I see, I see pretty much a bunch of you out there in the audience, so thank you.
Councilwoman Moreno.
Bruce, it's been a, a pleasure serving on the Housing Authority with you over the past couple of years. The reason I chose to serve on Housing 30, and I think a lot of people choose to volunteer on the Housing Authority, is there's fewer boards with, with more nobler mission than, than to provide housing to the most vulnerable population in Commerce City. And it's been a great pleasure to serve on that, and I've really enjoyed it. The strategic plan is phenomenal, and I think it's really going to guide us going forward.
Mr. Bullock.
I also want to say thank you, Bruce, and echo what Ms. Carson and Mr. Moreno said, and I'll say thank you to you also out there. Lynette, I see you sitting out there, you know, trying to hide, but we see you. You guys do a fantastic job for the underserved in our community, and I actually can say I don't think that there are any better housing boards in the metro area. Thank you.
I want to personally thank all of you for taking the time to, to participate in the community and to take on such a noble need, like Mr. Moreno said. Serving the underserved is a, is a huge piece of the Housing Authority, and I was proud to serve many, many years on it. So, thanks, Bruce, for, for staying involved, and even though you've moved, I'm glad that you're still participating with Commerce City and their needs.
Thanks. Well, I'd also like to thank city staff for their help on the strategic plan, because without them, sort of guiding us, I don't know if we could have figured it out. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Thanks again.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I think that went pretty smooth. I want to thank all the citizen volunteers, business owner volunteers, that help us with all our boards and commissions. I can tell you, I've worked at several places, and, and we've got a real strong group of people here. They're really committed to what they're doing. Divergent opinions, which is always great, and I think we've got a real strong group, so I want to thank them publicly also. I'm open to any questions. Also, we have our division managers here, in case you have any real detailed questions that I can answer about what we do day-to-day and community development.
Mr. Benson.
Yes, Jim, thanks for your presentation. You know, under Neighborhood Services Division, under the projects, you've got updating the approach to proactive inspections. What exactly will that be? And I know in our rental property task force, we tried to come up with a definition of what probable cause was, and it takes probable cause to be proactive. Can you tell me how that's going to work? Because I'm all for being proactive in that regard.
Well, number one, we will hold the Constitution first and foremost with probable cause.
The Fourth Amendment. The Fourth Amendment, right.
Exactly. The, the thing that we want to do is, rather than just driving down the street, if you will, and, and looking for violations. I've not articulated this yet with Mr. Lutter, but the thought process would be that we would identify geographic areas, and then we would essentially target those areas over the course of the six-month, you know, warm season, if you will, April to October, something like that. And we'd work with Ms. Halsted in Communications to try to, try to do some notification to those areas that we would be coming, and maybe identify kind of our top 10 violations of what we'd be looking for, give people an opportunity to ask us questions before we come out, so that when we get out there, hopefully we find a lot of properties in compliance. From a numbers standpoint, we would try that, to actually inspect every property within that geographic area. I think with the staff we have, we could probably cover the entire city within that six-month period. And so then we'd have some real good stats we could start looking at year over year to try to identify how many properties are in compliance with that first inspection.
Is there anything that we can do to help you, maybe by tweaking that definition of
Go right ahead, city manager.
Just if I could, if I could add, Mr. Benson is relating discussions that we had last year surrounding rental property certification. A vast majority of the work that the Neighborhood Services inspectors do is maintaining, is checking to see that, that the exterior of, of structures and the property itself meets the city's other property maintenance standards. That's, that's a pretty big task in and of itself. And we found, at least I, one of the conclusions I reached during the rental property certification discussion is I still think citizens are primarily concerned with the exterior condition of structures and the condition of property. Not that poor living conditions aren't something that we should be concerned about, but I think our first effort is making sure that basic property maintenance standards are being met. And for that, probable cause is much less of a, of, of an issue.
Of course, in order to, to go inside, you've got to have sufficient evidence on the outside to give you probable cause. I'm just saying, you know, we, we tweak that definition to some extent. If there's anything else that you all need, come to the council and let us talk about it and try to help you out. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Jim, thanks for the presentation. You know, you did a wonderful job. I'm glad that you brought in the different boards that apply to your area of expertise. We, we rely on those boards. We rely on the staff, so this council has the proper information and we'll be able to make quality decisions for our residents. So thanks again.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. McBroom.
The next item on our, on our agenda is the first part of an overview regarding the long-range financial plan and the city's budget. I just wanted to thank Mr. Tinklinberg for being here tonight. I know he's not feeling very well, and I'm sure based on that, you'll go even easier on him than you normally would.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The long-range financial plan was originally put together with the eye towards preparing the city for the tremendous growth that we knew was starting to occur. And the first plan was adopted in 2004 and covered through the end of 2010. So it's obviously time to update the plan, and we began that in, some early work in 2009, and worked in 2010, and did a number of presentations to council at the end of 2010 and early 2011. So some of this will be review for some of the past council members or existing council members, and for the new council members, hopefully this is informative. Starting with the historical general fund revenues, this chart, or this table, has a tremendous amount of information on it, but what I wanted to basically point out to you is that these different categories of revenue for the city, namely taxes, licenses and permits, intergovernmental service, charges for services, that type of thing, some of them go up, some of them go down over the past 10 years. The, the point of all of that is that there's fluctuations depending on what's occurring. Taxes increased from 24 and a half million in 2001 to 57.2 million in 2010. Now that's, there's an unusual event in 2010, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Licenses and permits actually went down during that 10-year period, and the reason for that was due to the drop-off in residential housing construction. Intergovernmental service, or revenue share actually nearly doubled from 1.1 million to 2.1. So going down to the bottom, almost the second bottom line there, the total general fund revenues went from approximately 31 million in 2001 to 64.6 million in 2010. That would be an eight and a half percent growth per year on average. However, the very bottom line shows the unusual event in 2010. There were one-time tax settlements that brought in 17.1 million dollars. Now, that's revenue that should have come in in prior years, but did not, and for a variety of reasons, didn't end up being settled until 2010. So if you take that 17.1 million away from the 64.6 million, you actually see revenue of 47.4 million in 2010. And that would have been a 4.8 percent growth on average during the 10 years. And I'd like you to remember that number later as we go through this. This is just simply a graphical representation of what we were talking about on the previous table. Again, it shows the, the increase in revenue from 2001 through 2006, and then it started dropping off down to 2009. And then in 2010, there was actually an increase, even after you factor out the one-time tax revenue settlements. Some comments on those revenue estimates. If revenues had, or the upcoming estimates I'm going to show you, if revenues had continued to grow at a rate seen from 2000 to 2006, the city's revenues today would be in that 65 to 70 million dollar range, and obviously, we're not there. Now, we will see growth in the next decade. The question is, how much? There's both organic growth and acquired growth. Organic growth being that which is basically the expansion of business by our existing businesses, and the acquired growth, meaning new businesses moving into the community. The low revenue estimate assumes only small amount of growth from our existing businesses. The middle and high revenue estimates assume there will be also new business adding to the Commerce City economy. So then, looking at those estimates, the 2011 number is fixed by the 2011 budget. The, and then from there, we adjusted based on a medium, or a high, medium, and a low estimate, as well as, then we came back and did ultra-low in case the housing market did not pick up at all. The low estimate is 3.9 percent. Middle estimate shows growth of 5.3 percent, and the high estimate shows a growth rate of 6.8 percent. So this is showing the historical as well as the estimate trend lines, just for comparison purposes. So here's some comments on those revenue estimates. The estimates include only the recurring portion of one-time revenues. In other words, it does not include the large one-time sales and use tax settlements. And what I mean by recurring one-time revenues, the audit staff typically brings in more than, a little over $3 million per year from audit revenue, and so we budget, including that in our operating revenues. Anything beyond that, we call one-time revenues, and we don't include it in the operating As I mentioned, the ultra-low estimate of 1.7 percent growth is basically a worst-case scenario. If that happened, we would have to scramble to maintain services and very probably have to cut services. The middle, or I skipped over the low estimate. Low estimate assumes very little expansion, 3.9 percent growth. The middle estimate includes both growth from within existing businesses and modest expansion in the number of, of businesses, whereas the high estimate basically is the upside scenario, assuming the economy would bounce back. It's still lower than the 2000 to 2006 growth rate, however. The middle and high estimates may provide money to add employees, increase services, and add new programs and capital projects, and more on that in a moment. Looking at the vulnerabilities of our, vulnerabilities of our revenue, all city revenues are affected to varying degrees by the economy. For example, sales tax is going to rise or fall as the retail sales change. However, Commerce City's not reliant on big-box retail. The only large retailer we have is the Walmart store. So as a result, we're less vulnerable to economic shocks, so that's the good news. Use tax falls and rises as businesses either contract or expand their equipment purchases. Franchise taxes come from utility sales and telecommunications purchases. So when the economy went, went sour, then people, you know, a number of people reduced their cable TV purchase, for example. And as a result, our, our franchise revenue fell to some degree. Property taxes is another fairly large category, about 2 million a year, and changes in the property tax are delayed, and, and that's due to the market. You know, the values track the market, and then the assessor sets their valuations, assessed values, based on the market. For example, in 2011, they did the, the residential reassessment. And then, as those assessed values change, taxes are collected a year later. So again, there's a delay. And so property taxes fall later than the economy turns soft, and they rise later than the economy strengthens again. Municipal court fines, another large category. Those are fairly stable. Those are affected more by police traffic unit staffing than anything else. Major source of permit revenue is building permits, which are affected by the housing market, business expansion, and new business locations. Investment earnings are determined by market interest rates, and of course, Federal Reserve Bank and, and market expectations dictate that. Intergovernmental revenues are, that are determined by the Colorado Legislature, include the highway users tax, motor vehicle registrations, and cigarette tax. Now, we also receive lottery revenue, but it doesn't go into the general fund. And while the legislature may amend the sharing formula, again, it would not affect our general fund, because that goes into our capital improvement program. We also receive intergovernmental revenues from Adams County. We receive road and bridge tax, about 430,000 per year. And that's one where the commissioners could reduce the mill levy for road and bridge and increase their general fund levy. So that's a way of shifting the burden off of the county budget onto city budgets. They have not done so, so far, but they certainly could do that. We also receive transportation tax. That's the sales tax, where they share a portion with cities for road improvements. They cannot change that revenue-sharing formula, and we receive about 600,000 per year, and that goes into the capital improvement program. Open space tax, again, goes into the capital improvement program, not the general fund, and the commissioners cannot change that revenue-sharing formula either. That's 240,000 per year. Our greatest vulnerability of all of our revenues, in my opinion, is the intergovernmental revenues, because those are, bulk of those are determined by the state legislature. One and a half million from highway users tax, 165,000 for motor vehicle registrations, and 100,000 from cigarette tax. So that's a total of 1.7 million. That would be able to be reduced any time the state legislature is in session. The amount vulnerable from the county is 430,000. So at a minimum, we have to be aware of this vulnerability, which is almost 2.2 million. And my recommendation is that we move those revenues out of the general fund and into the capital improvement program. However, that leaves a 2.2 million dollar gap that we would have to fund in some other way, or reduce expenditures by 2.2 million. So obviously, that's, that's not an easy choice. Looking at our general fund expenditures, these are our actual expenditures from 2001 to 2010. Those grew, grew at an annual rate of 13.5 percent. Now compare that to the rate of our revenue growth. Obviously, expenditures grew more rapidly. Now, the next question is, well, why would that be? This is a chart of the city population and city expenditures. On the left-hand side is population. You can see it goes from 0 to 50,000. When I sent this out earlier with the council packet, I, I used a different number, I'm sorry.
Scale.
Scale, sorry. On the left, on the right-hand side, for the city expenditures, it topped out at 45 million. And I realized it wasn't consistent scale, so that's why I converted that to 50 million, to keep it on a, basically a thousand to one ratio. So you can see, the blue line are the city expenditures. They track the population growth very closely. And the reason for that is, the biggest growth driver And the reason for that is, the biggest growth driver, when the population expands, that increases the calls for service. Calls for service determines police department staffing. Police department is the largest department. It's the majority of the expenditures for the city. So obviously, it has a direct impact. General fund expenditure estimates, we did a low, medium, and high estimate. And again, the low estimate is at 3.8 percent. The medium is at 5.2, or 6.2, I'm sorry, and the high is at 8.2 percent. Now, comment on this. This shows the revenue estimates charted with the expenditure estimates. So the low revenue estimate matches the low expenditure estimate, and the reason for that is, the finance department basically constrained the expenditures in that estimate to match the low to the low. We did not do that with the medium and the high. What we did was, we prepared an estimate of the revenues for the medium and the high, and asked the operating departments to prepare their estimate of a medium and a high expenditure estimate. So those two rushed-colored, red-colored lines, the top one is the expenditure line, and the one below it is the revenue line. So obviously, it's not fiscally constrained. Same thing with the expenditure, high expenditure and the high revenue line. The high expenditure line is more than, in excess of $10,000, or $10 million more than the high revenue line by the time we get to 2020. What this points out is just the critical nature of managing the budget each year, and the fact that we have to pay very close attention to the decisions that we make, so that we don't enter into obligations that will cause that to increase beyond our control. The low expenditure estimate basically maintains existing operation. No new employees, no service expansion, no major capital projects. Now, one-time tax audits and settlements might be able to fund one or more large capital projects. However, the downside of that is that major capital projects require ongoing revenue to cover added ongoing operation and maintenance costs. So in essence, that bullet cancels out the one before it. We can't do major capital projects, because we won't have the operating revenue to pay for the ongoing expense. That's why the capital budget and the operating budget have to stay in balance. Turning to the 2011 budget, this is the adopted budget, not the amended budget. The amended budget is substantially changed. We had estimated operating revenues at 44.9 million, and the operating budget at 45.2 million. Then, in addition to that, there were transfers, the biggest one being to debt service. That's for the sales and use tax bonds for Quebec and 56th Avenue. That's the $64 million of bonds that we have outstanding. In addition, there was a transfer to the, transfer to the capital improvement program fund, 2.4 million dollars, for a total budget of 50.9 million. Now, if you compare that revenue line to the bottom 50.9 million, there's 6 million that isn't covered by that revenue. The way we came up with that is using fund balance in the general fund, to the tune of almost 1.6 million. Also using fund balance from the one-time revenues for the capital improvement program, to the tune of 2.4 million dollars. And then transferring retained earnings from Fleet Division of 1.9 million back to the general fund. And just a word of explanation for the new council members. We have several internal service funds. Fleet is one of them. And the money for purchase of the new vehicles in Fleet, for example, or the new computers in information technology, comes from allocations that are paid by all of the operating departments. So finance pays an allocation to information technology, because we use a lot of computers and software and that type of thing. There are no vehicles assigned to finance, so there's no payment from finance to Fleet for a vehicle allocation. However, when you look at the police department, they're going to have a very high vehicle allocation, because they have a lot of vehicles. So that's, they're basically an internal business. And the retained earnings is what is retained in those funds to replace the equipment over time. And, you know, if they have a good year and don't have a lot of repairs on equipment, for example, then there's additional retained earnings that they would keep. So all of that money came originally from the general fund, and so when they have that money that's been retained, we look at that and say, well, in case of a situation like this, we could move some of that back to the general fund. So we budgeted to take 1.9 million from Fleet. Then there was also two small funds. One was a reserve fund for parks and recreation equipment within the general fund. And then also, we closed out the special improvement district fund, and that was transferred to the general fund. So that's how we covered the $6 million in terms of the budget. Now, moving on to how we think things will end up, and I have to offer a huge caveat here. We're still receiving revenue numbers for 2011. We're still receiving invoices for 2011. So these numbers are changing, and they will continue to change through February. Basically, this is the amended budget, including a loan to the Urban Renewal Authority. That total is 58.5 million dollars. And we expect the revenues to come in about that amount. The expenditures and transfers out, 58.4 million, or 58.5 million was budgeted, looking like 58.1 million will be closer to the actual expenditures. Now, of that 58.5 million, 11.2 million came from various fund balances. That's how we budgeted. And a lot of that came, obviously, from the various budget amendments that occurred during the year, because the official adopted budget showed only those transfers that are shown on this page. Basically, you know, 1.5 of operating, or 1.6 coming out of general fund operations, or out of general fund, fund balance for operations, and then 2.4 million coming out of fund balance for the capital improvement program, and then 1.9 coming from Fleet. So you can see, this is significantly higher. And the reason for that is, these unusual expenditures shown at the bottom of this slide, we defies the 2002 revenue bonds. And what that means is, we got rid of them. We paid them off. That was 1.3 million. We had the loan to the Urban Renewal Authority, that's 4 million. Transfer to the capital improvement program that I mentioned earlier, 2.4 million. And then, energy lease financing. We received financing from a financial institution that allowed improvements to improve the energy efficiency, particularly of this facility and a couple of the other facilities. That was to the tune of 1.7 million. And then we also re-appropriated some of the money from 2010. That was 2.1 million. Now, the 2012 budget, as adopted, shows operating revenues of 47.1 million and operating budget of 46.2 million. But then again, we have the transfers out, the biggest one in this case being the transfer to the capital improvement program, 5.7 million. And then the second largest is the transfer to debt service, 3.2 million. That left 8 million not covered by revenue. But again, we were able to cover that through a variety of small accounts, plus 700,000 transfer from Fleet, 700,000 transfer from information technology, as well as using fund balances. 862,000 for operations, and then the 5.7 million being, one-time revenues being transferred to the capital improvement program. So there was no gap. Now, comparing 12 to 11, 2012 to 11, I stripped out the one-time dollars that were transferred to the capital improvement program, and that gives you a little clearer picture of operations. In 2011, there was 3.6 million not covered by revenue. In 2012, it's 2.3 million. So obviously, there was, you know, improved situation there. And then, looking at 2013, this is only the plan, budget plan, not an adopted budget. But again, it's an indicator of where things are going. There, we're showing only 729,000 not covered by revenues. But again, that assumes that there won't be significant increases in expenditures by the time the departments prepare their budgets for 2013. So a quick summary on the general fund. Some general fund revenues are vulnerable, and the other takeaway is that we need to constrain the growth in operating costs. Also, there's not enough revenue to fund inflation in operating costs plus capital projects. So that means we need to identify ongoing O&amp;M costs of projects as well. Are there any questions on the general fund portion? Otherwise, I'll keep rolling on to the capital projects.
Councilwoman Carson?
Roger, just quickly, the elected officials' retirement fund. I know it's there, and I understand why it's there, and that it looks to me like it increases by 2,000 to 2,500 dollars each year. How many years before that starts to come down? Do you, can you spec, I mean, I know you can't speculate it totally, but there's got to be a...
Well, there's a way of doing it. It's like insurance companies, and to put it very crassly, it starts coming down when past council members start dying.
But is that, is that the increase we should be thinking of for every year? Is 2,000 to 2,500, or is there going to be years that, there's going to be more people?
No, that number was set prior to council's action to
Okay.
... remove new council members from that program. So that number, I know, will go down. I just don't know how much at this point.
So from 2013, is that about the highest you think it's going to get?
I would believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman McQuinney?
Thank you, Mr. Tinklinberg. Just a quick question on the defeasance of the 2002 revenue bonds. I know this was one that we talked about in earnest in our past budget discussions as a strategy. Can you just speak in a little bit more detail to the benefit of that approach to handling that, as far as paying those off in that lump sum when we had the one-time revenue?
Certainly. The 2002 bonds were coming close to being retired, and we were able to, the reason I use the term defeasance, that's a financing term that indicates when you basically escrow money with a financial institution, and they take over the payments of, you know, future bond, debt service. But we were able to also do an early call on, I believe it was the last year and a half of the debt service payments. And by doing that, we saved the interest at that time on those payments. So it was a combined benefit of basically getting it off of our books by paying it off and also reducing the amount of interest that we would have paid in the, in the future.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Roger. On the page 21 here, role was sent to us. We don't have, well, I don't have, transfer, well, that's on there, energy lease financing, appropriation to budget amendment, 2.0 million. That's not on here, so...
Right. I will send this presentation out to you. This was another slide that I updated, and primarily because the numbers have changed. The numbers you saw was what was presented to the Quality Community Initiative, and we've been updating numbers here at the end of the year. So I added these bottom bullets as well, to explain kind of what's going on up there, and I'll get these out to you tomorrow.
Okay. And as far as operating budget, as far as the city employment-wise, how much, how much of that is tied into the budget? What part of that? Having 45 million?
I'm sorry, I missed the first...
City, as far as city employees? How much of this budget is part of that? Operating budget?
If you don't mind, hold on just a second. Let's see here, Mr. Moreno? Are you done over there with Steve?
He's checking. Hold on for a second, Mr. Moreno.
The answer, Mr. Douglas, is found on page 39 of the budget. Of our salaries, we're 23 million, and then with benefits, combined with salaries, that was 31 million. So out of, let's see, our operating budget was about 44, 45 million. So a significant portion is due to staffing. But again, it's, we try to limit that as well. There's an informal budget policy that was not, never formally adopted, but has been agreed upon by city management and council, that we would keep overall salaries below a certain percentage, and overall salary and benefits below a certain percentage of our total expenditures.
Good, thanks.
Mr. Moreno?
Roger, you mentioned that's an informal budget policy. What's the percentage?
It's 45 percent for salaries alone, and 55 percent for salaries and benefits.
Okay. As a percentage of the?
Total expenditures, yes.
Okay, thank you. Roger, on the energy lease financing, you know, obviously, we're paying that out, but we're saving energy costs as well, as a result of the upgrades that we made. Have those two numbers equaled out yet? Are we, or are we paying more upfront for the lease financing, and then we'll save that in the long term?
Well, in theory, the savings are supposed to exceed the lease payment. The reason we don't have to worry about that is, the company that did the work guaranteed that the savings would exceed the lease payments. So we're just doing a tally now to see how those numbers compare, and I'm sure they are too, and we'll be discussing those numbers. But the key thing is, they guaranteed that the savings would exceed the lease payments.
Great. So the savings should be above 1.7 million?
Over time, yes.
Over 10?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else, Roger, go ahead and continue with the presentation.
All right, thank you. This is where we ended off. Just a couple more comments on the revenue and expenditure estimates. You know, the operating budget is going to be a challenge until the economy recovers, but I, you know, I'm confident we can keep it balanced. Funding for large capital projects is not currently available, and that's one of the key takeaways as we start talking about capital projects. Now, there was some question about fund balances, and so I wanted to cover that just briefly with you as well, starting with what's been our fund balances historically. One of the caveats to the information is that fund balances fluctuate up and down due to bond proceed income and expenditure of bond proceeds, as well as, you know, unusual events such as audit revenue, one-time tax settlements, all of those type of things. That's going to cause those numbers to fluctuate. The total fund balances are reported in our comprehensive annual financial report, and those include official reserves. So let me offer a side comment on that for a minute. Think of, excuse me, fund balances as the entire stock pond for our cattle, you know, putting it in agricultural terms. So we have this big stock pond. Within that pond, we have a smaller tank that's called the reserves. So the reserves always are inside of our fund balance. And so when we expend or add to our fund balances, that doesn't change our reserves. Our reserves are set by reserve policy, and they're set as a percentage of the budgeted expenditures. And let me just zip over to that a second. So there's basically four levels of savings that the city has. The biggest pot is fund balances, and that's both designated and undesigned. And then within the overall fund balance, we have our operating reserves, so that's the easiest to get to, and that's 10 percent of expenditures. And then below that, we have another layer of reserve called our safeguard reserve, which is tougher to get to. It's only allowed to be used in emergencies. That's 10 percent of expenditures, plus 50 percent of annual debt service. And then the most difficult to get to would be the Tabor Reserve, which is 3 percent of our expenditures. So when I say percentage of expenditures, that means, as the operating budget either goes up or down, then the amount of reserves that are required goes up or down, because it tracks directly with the amount of budgeted expenditures. The other takeaway is, the city has never used reserves. We budgeted to do it one year, did not do it. And that was, I think, 2008. We budgeted to do it one year, did not do it, and that was, I think, 2008, if I remember right. So, then looking at these actual numbers, the balance is in total governmental funds. And governmental funds is, is basically a term that applies to all of the governmental operations of the city. So, it's broader than just the general fund. It includes the capital improvement fund. It includes the impact fee funds, all of those different funds. So, it basically is everything except the golf course, because the golf course would be a business type of fund, not a governmental type of fund. So, our balances there from 2002 at 46.9 million grew to 107 million by 2010. But the high year was 2006. That was when it was at almost 116 million. But again, that was a year when we issued bonds, and so we had bond proceeds that inflated that. Unrestricted fund balance would include our official reserves. So, that grew from 36.8 million in 2002 to 62.4 million in 2010. Now, 2010 is an unusual year, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Then turning to the general fund by itself, not including any of the other funds, just the general fund, in 2002, that was 6.9 million, and then that grew to 35.9 million in 2010. Couple comments on that. 2009, the general fund, fund balance basically doubled. And the reason it doubled was, we combined Parks and Recreation Fund, Road and Bridge Fund, and the Sales and Use Tax Fund with the general fund. Previously, they had always been separate for unknown historical reasons. And one of the things that the, the GASB pronouncements require is that we start combining funds. GASB stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and so they, they issue pronouncements every year, and it becomes more and more difficult to comply with them, but that's just a side editorial note. Anyway, we combined the funds, and so that's why the general fund, fund balance basically doubled in 2009. And then in 2010, as we discussed before, we had the large one-time tax settlements. We had three settlements that came in, and so we went from 15.3 to 35.9 million in just one year. Now, 2011 is going to be less, because during 2011, city council obligated a significant portion of those one-time dollars. So, again, when, when you see the financial report for 2011, it'll, it'll be reduced. Now, in 2011, in February, council set the 2011 priorities, and you, as the new council, will soon set the 2012 priorities. All of that is guiding staff as we try to accomplish a quality community for a lifetime. But to, you know, to, to gain that ultimate vision of that tagline, we're going to need your direction in building an action plan on how to get there. As mentioned before, 2004 Long Range Financial Plan identified over a billion dollars of capital needs by the time of buildout for the city. During the last 10 years, we invested approximately 250 million. So, rhetorically, what quarter do we build in the next 10 years? In other words, how do we prepare for the remaining 20 to 30 years until buildout? So, a quick summary of the long-range financial chapters, and we'll, we'll get into more detail about the capital side of things at the, at the next presentation. But as we mentioned earlier tonight, expenditures exceed revenues in the medium and high estimates, so that's a cautionary note. We have to keep our budgeting under control. New drainage, new drainage improvements are almost development funded. And I say that because most of the new development is in drainage basins, where we either have drainage fees in place that are paid at the time of building permit, or are in, or will occur in basins where we can establish a fee. What we cannot fund from that is any improvements that are needed in the older areas of the town that were developed prior to setting up these drainage basin fees. Also, what's not funded by those fees is any of the drainage maintenance. And so, to fund that, we need a stormwater utility generating at least 3.367, 3.4 million dollars, basically, per year. Now, in addition to drainage, we also have facilities that will need to be expanded and improved, because as the population grows, there will be additional staff, and there will need to be a place to house that staff, basically, or house additional equipment to maintain roads, that type of thing. So, what's been shown as being needed in the next 10 years are two expansions to the municipal service center and a police substation. The first phase of the MSC expansion would be in 2015, estimated, at an estimated cost of 2.3 million. A police substation in the north area would be 10.1 million in 2010 dollars now, by 2018. And then the second phase of the expansion of the municipal service center would be by 2020, and that would cost almost $2 million. So, the 10-year total for all of that is 14.4 million in 2010 dollars. City council adopted the Vision 2020 Plan, which is the transportation plan, and it set priorities for the road projects. So, these are the priorities in priority rank as set in that vision plan. Tower Road was the highest priority, being the first phase of Tower Road, costing $30 million. And then there's three different types of improvements to 96th Avenue, two of them to 88th Avenue, 72nd Avenue, Signal System, Rosemary Street, Colorado Boulevard, and 56th Avenue. The Parks Open Space Recreation Trails Chapter summarized, identified needs there. However, these have not been priority ranked, so that is one of the things that will need to happen. There was a survey of the citizens which listed, the results listed trails as the highest priority. So, that's why you see trails listed at the top here, but beyond that, there's no formal ranking in terms of priority. And you can see that, you know, while trails are relatively inexpensive, when you have long segments of trail, it can add up. So, you can see that that first one that's listed is almost $8 million. O'Brien Canal Trail, 5.6 million, et cetera, et cetera. You can see all the way through there. Now, if you take all of those elements, drainage, stormwater, facilities, transportation, golf, open space, recreation trails, the total of all of that is 294 million. Again, Parks Recreation Trails hasn't been priority ranked, so that doesn't necessarily mean that all of that will need to be done in the next 10 years. Transportation is priority ranked, but again, in terms of fiscally constrained model, can we fund all of that in the next 10 years? That's, that's the big question there. We will receive approximately 40 million of pass-through dollars over the next 10 years. That 40 million, in other words, 4 million a year, that's the transportation tax, that's the, what was the other one? Vehicle, motor vehicle registration fee, things like that. We also get Adams County Open Space money and lottery funds from the state, but those two sources are being used to basically maintain our existing resources in Parks and Recreation. So, not all of that 40 million is available for new project. So, some of the takeaways for you to think about in terms of the capital projects, there's not enough money for all of the needed capital projects. We need to priority rank those projects. We need to identify the ongoing operation and maintenance costs for those projects, and then we need to establish project phasing plans. And most importantly, we need to develop new funding sources if we're going to build all of those projects. Concluding comment is, I think we can do that, but again, it's going to take some ingenuity and tough decisions. Now, what's next? The next presentation will delve a little more deeply into the projects, capital projects, and then we'll start talking about some of the funding options, because there are options available in terms of how we fund those various projects. Any questions on any of that?
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, Roger. On this, on this drainage and stormwater, I know in the northern area, a lot of that was done by the developers as far as the, the drainage and stormwater. And, and how much of that is South Adams? Do they take care of throughout the city?
Well, two comments, Councilmember Douglas. One is, the, the fees that were paid by development in the north range paid for the initial improvements. They don't pay for the ongoing maintenance. In terms of the requirement to maintain those facilities, none of that is South Adams County. That's all city responsibility. So, that's our ongoing obligation. In addition to that, the federal government has mandated that cities be responsible for water quality in terms of storm drainage. So, that's a federal mandate that we have to comply with, and that involves both public education, as well as, you know, design and maintenance, all of those factors.
And, Mr. Douglas, that's water quality being returned to the river
Yes.
...in form of storm drainage, not water quality that comes out of your tap. Seeing no one else, thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Just one second. It, we have a, a big road to hoe here, and, you know, number one on my priority is making sure that we are, are solid financially for the 2012, 2013 cycle. So, I know we're going to be relying upon you for some ingenuity in this rough economy, and hopefully, the economy starts to rebound, and I believe we're already starting to see it having a transition to, to rebounding. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Just echo your comments. It's, this is a challenging topic. We know it's, it's not the most exciting topic to discuss, so we appreciate the time tonight to present this, this initial documentation. It seems to me, in thinking about council's retreat, that most everything you discuss really ties back to the city's long-range financial picture. Everything you discuss in terms of services or tax policy, it all has an impact on either the revenue side or the expense side. So, I tend to think of this long-range financial plan discussion as the overall umbrella topic. And just about everything that we discuss on an ongoing basis, and especially what you'll be discussing on February 24th and 25th, directly impacts this. So, it's good baseline information for you to have, and I encourage you, as you're looking through the material, don't hesitate to ask Mr. Tinklinburg or anybody on staff who you think might be able to help you. Ask questions. We'll be there at the retreat to answer questions, but this is extremely vital information as you talk about setting a vision for the city of Commerce City. And again, Mr. Tinklinburg highlighted what he'll be discussing in Part Two of the presentation, which is scheduled for February 13th.
Okay, I do have a few councilmembers that have some comments or questions. Mr. Moreno?
Roger, in looking at the project estimates in the capital improvement projects, for the capital improvement projects, are those estimates still relevant, considering the escalating costs of construction and building materials?
Well, they're relevant. Sorry. They're relevant to the degree that we keep in mind that they're based on 2010 dollars. So, you know, that, as we move forward, we're going to, and as we get into actually choosing projects, then we're going to have to have updated cost estimates from either the city engineer or, you know, consulting engineers to tell us what, what the new costs would be.
Great. And on your list of projects, Tower Road obviously was first priority. Under second priority, though, you had 96th Avenue, A, B, C. Can you remind me of what those, where exactly the stretches are of those different phases?
Sure. One of those was the overpass on 96th Avenue over the Union Pacific Railroad. The other was widening the 96th Avenue between basically I-76 and Highway 2. And then there was also a segment punching through 96th Avenue from Buckley Road to Tower Road.
Okay, thank you.
And then the same thing would hold true for 88th Avenue. There was an overpass over the U.P. plus widening between I-76 and Highway 2.
So, for example, 96A, is that the westernmost corridor or the easternmost?
A, as I recall, A and B were the westernmost segment, and then C was the easternmost, but I'll, I'll have to verify that just to double check.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McLeodani?
Thank you. And I think on 96th A, that was the one that was easternmost, right? Because that had the GID component. There was a builder that talked about doing that segment between Tower and Buckley, including a bridge segment over Second Creek there. I just wanted to piggyback on the comments made by Mr. McBroom about how these discussions in our retreat are really going to have to center in, in all respects, on budget. And this is a direction that I think we've seen our retreat discussions taking over the last couple of years. And one of the reasons that we sought to move that retreat discussion as early in the year as we did, sort of on the heels of the prior year's budget discussion, to immediately set up what would in effect be our agenda for the year. And I think where we've, we've had staff put in front of council over the last several years, some very challenging topics around policy questions, not unlike the stormwater utility that Mr. Tinklinburg, Tinklinburg referenced tonight, but any number of things that are probably not so popular, but critical for us to consider deeply. And I think, and when I think about the retreat, it's, you know, it's sure easy to think about the things you want to see show up, but it's the paying for it and really accounting for the growth that's going to come and the increasing cost of supporting that growth. The other thing just to call into mind, I think I sent out a presentation about three or four weeks ago that I got from the Dr. Cog Economist that showed some state-level estimates that were being done as part of the, the studies that DU was hosting on behalf of the state, looking at the state budget. And I think it's important to look at, as we plan, where there might be actually greater potential risk to some of the dollars that we see coming through the state or the county because of the changing structure of the state budget. When you look at the state budget out to 2020 and beyond, the amount of money that will be coming down to the communities, whether it's to the school districts, to the cities and counties, is going to decline at an even ever greater pace. And so, we're going to have to look at how we replace that revenue and enhance that revenue. So, not only is there the gap based on the current formula, but it's actually exacerbated over time, depending on where things go. So, we've got a lot of work in front of us. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the next round. It's been great to see the evolution of this process and for us to have these tools as a, as a collective to, to be able to sit down and really make some fact-based decisions. I appreciate it.
I'd like to leave this subject on a positive note. There are many cities who have had to cut services, go on furloughs, lay people off. I'm glad Commerce City's not to that point. This deep into a poor economic time, I think we're fairly healthy to get through the next couple of years, and with the council that I see here on, on both sides of me, I think we're going to do plenty to try to encourage new development, add jobs to existing businesses, and to move forward economically to help with those long-term revenues so that we can get some of these CIP projects completed. So, I, I have a very positive outlook on the future for Commerce City. Thanks again, Roger. Now, it is time for us to move into an executive session. What are the desires of council? Mr. McLeodani?
Would move that we convene an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 Sub 4 Sub E regarding negotiations for agreement with Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver, Inc.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Second motion.
Motion, the second, go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We will adjourn to an executive session. Would like to ask the citizens that are still here with us tonight, please bear with us. Hopefully, it won't be very long, and we'll be back out to give our reports. very long, and we'll be back out to give our reports.
That's all right. I'll reiterate it so you know what was said. What has come forward is Mr. Bullock has asked, there's been a recommendation to move our executive session portions of the meeting to prior to the start of the regular meeting, so as that our residents don't have to sit in the audience while we're in executive session and so that the council doesn't have to stay here until 1:00 in the morning on some of these nights. So, the discussion with Mr. Gaylor was that we have to convene the meeting and open the meeting prior to going into executive session. However, the open, regular part of the meeting for the citizen participation would start at 6:30 as normal. All we would do is take care of any executive session issues prior so that you guys wouldn't have to sit in the audience and the council wouldn't have to stay till late. The downside to it is some of our council members have to work and they are going to be burdened with having to try to get here early. The start time that Mr. Bullock suggested was 5:30 for executive sessions to convene prior to 6:30 so that we could get into our regular meeting in front of the residents. Now, the city manager recommended that we start at 5:15 so that we can make sure that we have had time to wrap up and get back out into this arena in front of the residents by 6:30 to handle the open part of the agenda. So that is what has been asked and we're under discussion and looking for a consensus. Correct?
Correct.
All right. I see a lot of lights on. Are there other administrative stuff or discussion on?
It's for other things.
Okay, well, I'll go through them and if they're for something different then repush your light. Mr. Moreno?
Just on this, I don't mind at all and I think it's actually a good reform. But just tonight, you know, we had interviews for boards and commissioners beforehand. Many of us were not able to make it here by 5, much less 5:15. I think most of us were able to make it here by 5:30. So I would just suggest if we were going to do it, to do it at 5:30 because I know, I want to be respectful of those council members that do have full-time jobs.
Mr. Macaldoney?
I would echo Mr. Moreno's comments. I think, while ideal to start earlier and be able to wrap in time for the start of our normal meeting time, I think the fact that we're trying to get that business done, even if we have an overlap into the typical meeting start time, we're still better off than running well into the evening. So I would suggest a 5:30 start time as well.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Well, this is a question for Mr. Gaylor and I think we have to have a publicly announced meeting that begins like at 5:30 and then we convene and have somebody move in public to go into an executive session. Is that correct?
Right, right. That would be correct. We might, for the benefit of the public, state in our notice that the meeting will begin with an executive session with the regular part of the agenda to be handled commencing at 6:30 or thereabouts or immediately following the exec session, no, earlier than 6:30 as an example.
I think that's a good idea except for the fact that there are some people who might not be able to get here by 5:30 based on their work commitment. That would be my only, be the only drawback that I can see. But I'd like to see that happen so that we get that out of the way and people don't have to sit in the audience and wait 30 or 40 or minutes or an hour.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
I disagree. I mean, it's already been said, so 5:30 I agree with.
Okay. And I would say, on my end of it, based on the commitment, work commitments by some of the council, I would say, you know, if they get off at 5, 15 minutes to stretch in it, I would say 5:30. And in the case that our executive sessions weren't completely ratified by the time we got out of them to be back in here by 6:30, that we would continue those and get back into them at the end of the meeting. And I think it still would shorten up and probably, probably we wouldn't have to get back into them. But if we did have an executive session that ran longer than an hour, that we would be able to be out here in time or 45 minutes, we'd be able to be back out here in time. And if it needed to have continuance, we could do it after the meeting so that we could alleviate most of the time that our residents have to sit and wait for us to get out of executive session. So that would be my recommendation is that we also allow it to be reconvened at the end of the meeting if necessary. So what I'm looking for, Mr. Bullock, or Mr. Macaldoney, is your light on?
For another item.
Okay, for another item. Mr. Bullock? Yes. Committee for the retreat, we- Let's finish this consensus first, please. Oh, oh. I thought you were still talking on the consensus. I thought we'd already had the consensus. No, no, we haven't had a consensus. Oh, you asked me what? I would, I would ask for a consensus vote for moving these executive sessions to 5:30 with the notice to go out that the executive session would start at 5:30 if necessary. If there's not an executive session, the meeting will start at 6:30 and it will have to be done through the city clerk's office on arranging that. So if there's an executive session, it's from 5:30 to 6, or 5:30 to 6:15 and then our regular citizen portion of the meeting would start at 6:30 as normal. What are the consensus of the council? Would you read the roll so that we can give a consensus, please?
See, is that a motion that was made by?
A motion? No, it was just, it was just for consensus only, not for, correct?
Let's do a motion, because I-
Renee?
Okay, so move.
I'm sorry.
Put that into a motion.
Huh? Go ahead, Dominic.
Move to convene executive sessions when necessary at 5:30 PM and allow for continuance if necessary at the end of the council meeting.
Is there a second?
May I, may I?
Yes, you may.
Add to the conversation?
Yes.
If you're going to, as you structure this motion, please keep in mind that in, as the city attorney said, in order for you to go into an executive session, number one, you have to convene it from a regular meeting.
Correct.
So, it's not going to be on, if you go to a study session night, it's not going to be on studies, excuse me, study session nights.
Right.
You need to call the meeting first.
Right.
So, the way that motion just sounded, it was almost like the executive session is a whole separate thing. It has to be part of the meeting. So you need to move those meeting nights to 5:30, correct, Bob? 5:30. Because you can't just go into an executive session, you have to do the call, we have to post it as a regular meeting, call to order, roll call, then you can go into an executive session. So, as you're formulating that motion, please kind of add some of that language in there.
And you know, I would suggest as part of that, Dominic, to, so that we can elaborate so the citizens will understand it so that they don't feel they have to be here at 5:30 because we're going to take care of something while they're not here type of thing. I would, I would say that we can go, we will start the meeting at 5:30 and the only business that will be taken care of during that first hour would be executive session business with the regular meeting reconvening at 6:30 to handle the citizen portion of the meeting so that we're clear to our citizens and clear to our staff.
Withdraw previous motion and move to convene public meetings at 5:30 PM when the executive session is necessary.
With the, with the reconvening at 6:30 for the public?
And reconvene the meeting at 6:30 for the regular agenda items and allow for continuance if necessary of the executive session following regular agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Benson seconded. Now, will you please call the roll for a consensus vote?
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Does the person that seconded, is that okay with them?
Absolutely. Mr. Serna has made a point of order. I've asked him to make his point. He wanted to know if, if that is good with the seconder, the motion that has been considered. Because we didn't have a second on the first motion, Mr. Serna. So the only second we have is on this current motion.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for your point. Mr. Benson seconded the motion and you're happy with the motion?
Yes, the motion.
Correct. Now, will you please call, call the roll for a consensus vote?
Can we go ahead and start voting?
Is it flashing?
Let the motion, let the record show that the motion is carried. And I just want to reassure the public that we will not open or reconvene the public portion of the meeting until 6:30 as regularly scheduled meetings have been in the past. The attempt is only to take care of some of the business early so that you don't have to sit in the audience. And I want to thank Councilwoman Elliott for bringing the suggestion forward to go to this form of, of meeting reform. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And you got to give credit where credit's due.
Amen.
Now, we'll continue with administrative business. Those of you who had your lights lit, I've erased a lot. I've got Mr. Macaldoney lit up.
I think, Mr., oh, I'll get it. We have spoken over the last few weeks about preparations for the council retreat. We have not yet had a formal meeting of the retreat committee and in talking with Mr. Bullock, thought it may make sense to get that committee together to help further the planning effort for the retreat. One opportunity might be, because we have a special meeting of the council on Thursday, I think if we were to post that tomorrow, that would still meet posting requirements. Is that accurate?
Sorry?
If we were to have a meeting of the retreat committee Thursday after- If we were to have a meeting of the retreat committee Thursday after the special council meeting, would that fulfill posting requirements?
Yes, sir.
What's that? We have, we have a special council meeting at 5:00 PM that night, correct?
5:30.
5:30.
On Thursday?
Right.
That's correct.
Same night as the Friends of the Wildlife.
This week?
Yes. We have a special meeting on-
I know, I know, the case to second really low. It's not on my calendar, that's why I was asking.
I just remember hearing it on the calendar.
Staff, if I could, please. There is a council meeting this Thursday at 5:30?
That's right. It's a, it's a special meeting. We expect it to be very short. It's to allow council to take action on a second reading of an ordinance that's related to an economic development project, so the meeting should only last 10 or 15 minutes.
Correct. And that, that's to take a second on one of the motions, one of the items that we handled last week?
Which is actually, and it's actually a consent agenda item, so it should be a very quick-
It should be very short and quick. Would you please, because that is not, has not been on my calendar, Michelle hasn't put it on my agenda or on my calendar, would you please make sure that that's put on my calendar and to make sure that a notice is sent back out reminding all of council that that meeting is taking place on that day?
Absolutely.
And I don't know if all of you can make it. We need at least a minimum of five to have a quorum. So if there are some folks who can't get away from work and, and because, you know, it's, it's a special thing, as long as there are five of us, I will commit to make sure I'm here. As long as there are four others, we can handle the, the item. 5:30. Okay? Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Macaldoney.
And I just thank you for mentioning it. I had put a special placeholder in my calendar that night and didn't realize it wasn't the one from staff, so good catch.
Okay.
So back to the original item. Members of the committee, refresh my memory, it's Renee and I.
And Crystal.
Crystal and Steve.
Steve for the review committee. Would that evening work for you guys?
It isn't going to work for me because I'm at another meeting from four to six, but-
But well, you could-
As long as Jason's there.
If we plan to start at 6:00 PM, would that be?
I can be here because I'm coming right from Arsenal over here. So I'll come straight here for my other meeting.
Let me give us transition time.
So-
30 for the special meeting. 6 o'clock for the committee.
So do we need a, a motion for that special meeting or just request?
It has to be, it has to be-
Or not, sorry, not a special meeting, just a simple, simple posting?
Simple posting. I think we need a motion as long as it's posted for that committee. Do you have that, Ms. Secretary?
The committee-
City clerk?
You can just call that.
Great.
But I believe, didn't we already set the Thursday as a special council meeting?
We did. It didn't go out on our calendars, so therefore, as we were looking through our calendars this week, it didn't show up, and we all kind of spaced out that there's a meeting Thursday. That's why I asked for it to come back out as a notice.
I see. Well, but it has been called already?
Posted.
So it's already been called?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, no, we're good.
So you don't have to call again.
This is a different committee meeting we're talking about, Bob.
Right. The committee meeting you just call, you don't need conselaction.
You don't have to have posting for four councilmen?
Posting you do.
We do.
Correct.
But you don't have to have conselaction or call the committee.
So I'm asking the city clerk, can you post that so Friday that they can convene that at 6:00 PM?
Again, are they posted before?
Thursday, it's going to be right after you guys' special meeting.
Okay, good.
And I'd be able to get over here by six.
Good. Thursday at 6:00 PM?
So it'll be a strategic planning committee meeting following the special meeting after 6:30.
Correct.
Or 5:30, excuse me.
That's right. And we would just request staff presence from Mr. Aker and whoever else is appropriate for the planning.
And where will you be meeting? Council workroom?
I would assume the council workroom. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Macaldoney?
No, thank you.
Mr. Moreno, administrative business.
I'm going to pass these out to council. These are the retreat planning goal, agenda-setting worksheets that we've used in the past. Being that the strategic committee hasn't met yet, I set an informal deadline of that Monday, February 20th, before the retreat to turn in what you'd like to see accomplished in the next year for council. I will also send this out via email as well because I think we have a, a little bit more of a tech-savvy council. We're even dragging Ms. Carson along, so.
Easy, Donald, easy.
She may throw something at you.
So I'll, I'll send that out via, via email as well. The other agenda, administrative business item I had, are we, staff, applying for grants from the Northwest Greenway Corridor? There's $27.4 million available for projects?
There's not really.
No, it's two portions. There will be a portion forthcoming and one that's current. I just recently met with staff. They are developing plans. They have a developed plan already for the first round, which is what, 7 million, Tom?
10 million.
10 million. And then the second one is 17 million, right? And, and there, and so we have a plan developed that the council will be seeing soon to move forward to request funding for that, that 10 million that's on the table. And that is a localized for the, for the participants that are within the Greenway. The 17 million is statewide, but we are also developing an alternative plan to try to get, grasp some of that 17 million, which could be as early as six months after the first granting and up to several years after, correct?
That is correct.
Hopefully that answers your question.
That's, no, that's great that we have a plan in place. I just haven't heard anything about it.
So it is 27 million total, but it's split into two. One's localized for the Greenway, one is statewide.
Right. The other thing that I think could be beneficial with that program, being that Denver is also part of the Greenway Corridor, is perhaps encouraging Denver to maybe apply to finish the perimeter trail around the Arsenal?
You can't use it on trails.
No, it can't, can't be used on trails, and the plan that, that has been brought forward is, is more elaborate of a park-type-
It's restoration.
Restoration, correct.
It has to be used for restoration of an area that was damaged. You cannot use it to build trails or anything like that.
Correct. And if you would like to talk to or, or set up a, a short meeting with Mike or, or Tom, they can elaborate and explain the project to you.
Okay.
But the, the project will be coming forward to the council in a whole, as a whole.
Okay. Thanks.
Go ahead.
In, in anticipation of staff's application for that first round of grant funding, Parks and Recreation staff are planning a presentation, we think it's early March, for council.
If you'd like an update earlier, all you have to do is ask them, they'll be happy to share that with you.
Absolutely.
With any of the council.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Macaldoney, again?
Just to piggyback on Mr. Moreno's handout, you received a, an email from Mr. Aker today that contains the materials from the prior year's retreat. The one attachment is a PDF of our Excel workbook that contains inputs from each of the council members, as well as input from the citizen, the citizens that contributed through our survey on community needs. And so you're able to scan through that list and see, for example, Tower Road is a priority and who on council submitted that as a priority, whether or not it came in as a citizen priority as well. So as you're reflecting on the items that you want to add for consideration, you can scan that list. And I believe that the update we'll be getting from staff in the, is it the next meeting? Where they'll give us updates on progress, those should all fit together. So you'll be able to recognize projects that they update from those priorities that have sort of been building over the last couple of years. So I don't know if staff wanted to add to that at all?
Just one additional comment to add. Last year, we did do some, some ad hoc community surveying in advance of council's retreat last year. We have not initiated that effort this year because we have fairly recent community-wide opinion survey data from last summer. Before last year's retreat, we didn't have that. So that's probably going to be better data than the ad hoc surveying that was done before last year's retreat.
Would agree. Thank you.
Just Jason on that item as well. I actually was in, in process of, of looking for the council brainstorming worksheet on my computer, I actually found the priorities that Councilman Benson, Councilman, Councilwoman Carson, and Councilman Bullock had submitted last year. So I just handed those out to them as a good reflection of, of what they can see, what they submitted prior year, and actually what we accomplished, because a good number of what you submitted actually was accomplished.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I just want to make sure that if we have sidebars, they don't interrupt the discussion.
Well, I'm sorry, but earlier, Mr. Benson told me I wasn't friendly to seniors, and I was pointing out that that was number two on my list, and it's nowhere on his at all.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Carson. Now, I'm going to call on, on Councilwoman Carson to do her administrative business. Your light was on.
Since we're all in the mood to change, I would like to see us also change the way we do reports. I would like to see us go to a city manager report, city attorney report, and a report from the mayor. And we that sit on council, if there's something we want to turn in to the mayor, we could do that. But I don't see the need for every council person to do an individual report.
Here's, here's what I would like to ask if that's to take place, that those reports would be emailed or turned in to staff to compile so that I can go through the events that took place and the council members that were there to represent the city so that we can make it short, because Mr. Benson does seem to take a long time during reports. So we will, we'll consider that, Councilwoman Carson. Mr. Macaldoney, did you have to add to that?
I do. I'm just going to add to everything tonight. I, I don't dislike the idea. And one of the things that we've talked about in the past, I think at least casually with some folks, is we don't necessarily do a good job of providing consistent updates on those boards or commissions that we sit on that are external to the city. So I know Mr. Benson does a good job relative to Dr. Cog, but finding a way to put a box around those updates.
That's exactly what I think they're trying to do.
So, you know, it's not unlike when I get on the phone with my boss and I have to give an update, I get, I get, you know, three bullets. Tell me what happened in three bullets. What was it about? What's important for me to know about it? You know, what's, what's the next action? Super simple stuff. So I think if we were to take that, that approach and potentially submit those after a meeting, you know, I was at the 27J Capital Facility Fee Foundation, here's the three bullets that are relevant about that, and we were able to get those in to staff, that would be great additional content that would help all of us stay much more plugged into what our peers are doing and representing our city. So I like, I like the, the direction of your suggestion, Ms. Carson.
Well, I would still have a report, and it would be more lengthy. As long as it's okay with the rest of the council, I'm fine with, with the idea. And I know it's something that Councilwoman Elliott has brought up prior, that, you know, that's one of the things that she has witnessed in Aurora that helps shorten the meeting and, and stay in tune so that nine people aren't saying the same thing. So I think the request is, is great. Did you want a consensus on that this evening, or you want, yes, you want to put that in the form of a motion? Mr. Moreno, would you like to handle it? No? Ms. Carson, go ahead.
A motion to change the way that we do reports at the end of council meetings to only have reports done by city manager, city attorney, and the mayor.
Would you also include in there that the council would submit their report information on their boards and stuff to staff? So that I can have it?
Mayor report will include meetings and information submitted by council prior as to boards and commissions they're on, our meetings, there are any functions in the city that they've attended.
Okay, that's great. Is there a second?
Can I add to that before we second that? Because if there was a special meeting that would pertain to Commerce City on Dr. Cog, I think the best person to say, well, this is what was pertaining to Dr. Cog, would be that person on the board, instead of trying to give it to the mayor and have him elaborate. Only in cases like that would a council person make the report themselves. Otherwise, it would be given to the mayor and they'd say, Dr. Cog had a meeting, nothing was prominent about Commerce City, but we had a good meeting, thank you. You know, is that okay?
Are you, are you acceptable to that amendment?
That's fine with me. It could be up to the discretion of the mayor, or how, I don't know if you want me to actually say Dr. Cog would be the exception, or-
Well, not just Dr. Cog, E470. I just use that as- Any of those outside boards.
At the discretion of the mayor, that individual counselors would, would report out.
Okay. I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Was there going to be any discussion?
No. Not now. It was just approved.
I mean, you didn't ask for any discussion before the vote was taken.
You're right, I didn't. I thought we had taken it all as part of the motion. Would you, do you have discussion, Mr. Benson?
Well, at what point, you know, there, there might be actions that affect Commerce City, but not only Commerce City. So at what point do you draw the line? I mean, Commerce City might be one of many jurisdictions that's affected directly, but does it only have to directly affect Commerce City in order to be able to comment about it? I mean, it-
No, I, I think-
I don't care. I cannot, I go to a lot of meetings and everything, and that's why my, my reports are sometimes longer than others who don't go to a lot of meetings. And I don't care if I don't, if people don't want to hear the reports, that's fine with me.
You know what, Mr. Benson? I, I have no problem, and what I, since, since the, the motion and second and the vote was taken, that it's the, it's the mayor's discretion. If you have something you want to report on, all you have to do is notify the staff that you want to make your own report on whatever item it is, and they can put that onto the report agenda that I will give. And at the time I get to that, I will say, Mr. Benson has a report that he would like to personally give, and I will turn the floor over to you as I would any other council member. So I think we can handle that in, in that manner. So if there's any council person that has something that they have, that they feel personal about that they need to report on, fine, but this will take care of the bulk of it, and I think the motion and the second handled that portion. Is that, that helpful?
Yeah.
Mr. Douglas?
No, he, Jim already. I, I agree with Jim, so.
Okay. Does, does my response handle that?
Yeah, if something different, like we were saying, we were, if we were all, out of the five days, we were all together in four days.
Exactly. And I'm going to take care of the bulk of that council-oriented stuff. If there's something on oil and gas, and you or Jason or Renee wanted to report personally on it, you're the proper folks to do that. All you have to do is notify staff you want to make that report, and I will make sure that you're given that opportunity. Mr. Benson, did you have something further?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think it's an, it's an excellent concept. I would suggest just to get that process started. If you have an item you'd like the mayor to report on, send it to either me or to Ms. Rogers. That's probably the easiest way to do it.
I would agree. Thank you. So we'll go forward with that process, and we'll see how it works at the next meeting. If you just make sure you report your, your reports, report your reports to the proper staff. Seeing no one else on administrative business, we will get into reports at this time, I will ask the city manager for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again this evening, we have emailed out to you our weekly update that includes some key upcoming events that you'll want to be aware of, as well as reports on council action items that we are following up on. There's quite a bit of information in this one. Again, I won't review all of the updates. Please review what we've sent, and if you have questions, simply give me a call or Please review what we've sent, and if you have questions, simply give me a call or the staff person that's been working on that action item. Related to that, we've also included this week's fracking update. You'll find that in that document as well. And sent as a separate message in a separate email, Ms. Ryan Cordero has sent a weekly legislative update. The same applies there. Please take a look at that report, and if you have questions, contact Ms., and I'm sure he would be happy to answer them. In addition to those weekly updates, as a reminder, there is dinner tomorrow evening that actually includes the 27J Board of Education and the City of Brighton. I don't recall the location offhand, I think it's the 27J Training Center on...
Aitton Bridge.
Bridge Street.
Mm-hmm.
And then, again, as was discussed earlier, the special meeting Thursday.
Perfect, thank you.
That was all I had.
Mr. Turney.
The only item I have is to express my concern, I will not be here on the 27th of February, and that's when the second reading of the moratorium ordinance comes up. So, just as a word of preparation for that meeting for staff as well as the council, you need to plan ahead as to whether or not there's going to be a second reading that night, or if there's going to be an extension again of the involuntary moratorium. In the past, there have been extensive discussions with Oil and Gas Commission about the extension. So, we can't wait until the night before, the day before, February 27th, to determine whether or not there's going to be an extension. So, it's just going to take some communication and some effort, so you don't come up on the 27th totally unprepared as to what's going to happen that night. There has to be some preparation, and I've already alerted Jason, as well as Tom, and Brian, and I have all discussed it. Just be aware that that night, you need to take some action, because February 27th is when the second reading of the moratorium ordinance comes up.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have, and I'll be thinking about you on the 27th.
No, I don't think you will. Mr. McAldonie?
I was just going to thank Mr. Gaylor for that update and note that we will be firming up the agenda for the next several weeks at our meeting on Wednesday, with the goal of having our discussions lead to a point where we can have a good sense on that Wednesday, coming out of that meeting in advance of that following Monday. So, we'll be keeping in close touch with Mr. Aker as a result.
Thank you. I'm going to do our reporting a little bit different. Normally, I go last, I'm going to go first, so that nobody will have to duplicate some of the things, and maybe it'll make it smoother. First off, I would like to report, I did receive a call, as Mrs. Carson brought it up a while back, the crossing situation around the school in Bell Creek. I was notified by Kevin Vensel, who's an inspector for the Fire Department. He explained to me that he already had to pull one child out from under a car at that location, and he doesn't want to have to do it again. He's worried that there will be a fatality because of the traffic situation on Bell Creek Boulevard, not only because people try to cut through to avoid the light at 104th and 85, but because of the congestion of the school traffic. He did present me with a letter from the principal, or the executive CEO of Bell Creek Charter School, supporting some form of traffic control in the area. He also presented me with approximately 100 signatures from residents whose kids go to that school or who live directly adjacent to the school. I was compelled that he gathered those signatures in a 24-hour timeframe, and I do believe that there is an emergency type of need in the area. I did have a discussion with Mr. Vensel about the fact that speed humps and that type of, that type of traffic calming takes some time because of engineering, because of pavement, you know, pavement installation, those kind of things. I talked to him also about the potential for a signalized crossing, and I also talked to him about the potential to make that next intersection down from the school, instead of being a two-way stop, a three- or four-way, depending on the configuration of that intersection. That would be something that the city could do in a timely fashion, and we could remove it if necessary to install some other form of traffic calming, so I think it would be a great start. I would implore the staff to try to do something in a very short timeframe to address the concerns of the community in that area, because of the interest and need. I don't want to have a child hurt or an adult hurt because of the traffic situation that has arisen. I've tried to come up with a costly, time-effective way to handle it, and I discussed that with our city manager. I've also asked that the staff contact and stay in contact with Mr. Vensel as a point person on the issue of what we can do and how quickly we can do it, to try to alleviate the problem within the area. So, with that being said, I'm going to pass that off to staff. I would like the council to be updated on what the staff sees as a need and comes forward with as a suggestion, but I do think it is a time-sensitive issue. So, I'll move to my next item. Most of us attended, and several staff members, the Metro North Chamber Gala this last week. It was a great event, it was fun, there was a lot of interaction and a lot of camaraderie between city officials, state legislators, federal representatives, and senators. So, we took advantage of working on some of those relationships at the time. Also, I attended, as well as the Mayor Pro Tem, the Ballet Nouveau piece that was done at Pinnacle Charter School. I was one of the speakers, and implore them and congratulate them on their efforts with Monaco School and the program that they are helping our youth in our community to become more in tune with the arts. Also, most of us attended the State of the City address for the City of Brighton. I think they did a wonderful job. I think that they need to be congratulated as our neighboring city for the efforts they've made over the last year. I think that they're in great shape for a city their size, and want to congratulate them, and would ask staff to prepare something to go to them in that response. I also would like to mention AdCog. Most, if not all, of our council was present at the AdCog Dinner last week. It was probably one of the best-attended AdCogs that I've ever been at. It was put on by the City of Federal Heights. I think all of the cities within the Adams County Regional Council of Governments were in attendance, and some of our representatives, all the commissioners, were there, and we even had the pleasure of having the City of Aurora's mayor there as the keynote speaker. I would also like to thank all of the staff for their efforts in turning out a very well-done kickoff to the NIOP Challenge for the development, master planning of the dog track with the two colleges. They did an unbelievable job, it was, it was, it was just fluid, I mean, it was in tune with everything. I had the opportunity of being one of the tour guides on one of the buses to tour the dog track facility, as well as being a speaker at the event. Our staff did just a great job, and I would like to have the city manager's office make sure that a thank you goes out to all of those who participated from a staff level in making that such a great event. We also, several of us, attended the Hispanic Chamber Legislative Breakfast this last week. We got to hear a little bit about what our legislature is bringing forward this session on their budget needs. Education seemed to be the highest priority, and they did mention that they didn't see any tax cuts for small businesses moving forward this session, but it did, it did take into account K through 12 and higher education needs as part of their budget and intentions for the upcoming session. Also, I want to let the council know and staff, Mayor Hancock hands out these parking passes to every mayor within the metro area, so that when you attend meetings or have a business to take care of in downtown, it gives you a free pass at the parking meter. I am very thankful that I was given one. However, I want to make sure that the council knows this is as much theirs as it is mine and any executive staff. If anybody has the need to go downtown for a meeting, all you have to do is ask me, and you're more than welcome to use this as it was your own. Okay?
Can I have it?
No, you can't have it, Mr. Bullock. You can use it as if it was your own, but you do have to give it back. And I did have a lot of other internal meetings throughout the week. I do feel that things are starting to smooth out a little bit, and our council's starting to function with the staff in more fluid, in a more fluid manner. So, I want to, I want to thank the council and the staff for making those headways. With that being said, that is the conclusion of my report, and I'll start with Mr. Benson. Mr. Benson? Report.
Oh, I don't have a report, but I do want to say that unless my presence is required to get a quorum for Thursday night, I won't be there. And I need to know by about 1:00 o'clock that afternoon.
Do I have five people on this council that are going to attend?
If it's absolutely required...
One, two, three, four, five?
Six.
Six. Seven.
Okay.
We've got it handled, Mr. Benson, plan on taking the evening off?
Okay, but if something happens, somebody can't attend, just give me a call, and I can, I'm going to be down in Southern Colorado, but...
No problem.
Just let me know, okay?
No problem, I think we've got it handled. Councilwoman Carson?
Well, Mary, you did a very good job on reporting out for all of us. I will be on vacation, starting next week.
Good for you, you deserve it.
The next two weeks, so...
Great, thank you. Mr. Seder?
No report.
Mr. Moreno?
Given out this new policy, a try and no report.
Mr. Douglas?
The only thing I want to add is Monday, I went over and spoke with Republic, took a tour of the tower landfill, and want to invite all the other councilmembers to go over there and see what Republicans doing with their landfill, and they bring a lot of revenue to the city, almost $700,000 last year. So, I extend that out to all the councilmembers to go check that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott?
No reports.
Mr. McAldonie?
No further report.
Mr. Bullock?
No further.
No further report? The only thing I would add is mentioning the parking pass, would the executive staff send something over to Mayor Hancock's office, thanking him personally on my behalf? Thank you. If there's no further business to come before the council this evening, we adjourn.